Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Hupp will address your question just before the break.
Thank you. Hopefully, since there were three questions, I'm able to address all of them. I'd like to give the answer to the questions in at least two parts. The one is to clarify something. I think it's -- we say that the volumes are currently worthless, and we think it's obvious that at least that, they cannot be sold at the moment, is undisputed. Respondent says they will gain or they might gain a value in the future. We say this is speculative, and our expert ever takes this speculative possibility into account when he suggests that any proceeds from a potential sale in the future, should it ever happen, should be handed over to the government. That being said, I'd like to come to the second part of my answer and take you briefly through the facts. I understand the questions of the tribunal is expressing a certain concern, saying, "Okay, what should the government have done differently, and how could they have known?" And we say, "They could have done things differently, and they knew." If you recall the facts leading to the 30th Amendment, you will recall that there was initially on 30th of May, the first governmental draft, the so-called formulation aid. And there they had fixed shutdown dates for 2021 and 2022. And that's it, basically. The staged shutdown, which is now in the 13th Amendment, was introduced three days later after discussion between Chancellor Dr. Merkel with Prime Ministers of the Länder on 3rd of June. And there they decided to introduce a staged shutdown, 2017, 1921, 22. Now, the point is, as we explained in our reply, Germany made dozens of calculations whether the OEPVs could be used up for the 2021-2022 shutdown. But they made no calculations, at least we haven't seen any, calculating in advance whether the staged shutdown would work. They did that after the decision had been taken. They relied on the reference production volumes. Now, one thing is -- two things important. Firstly, when they presented this formulation aid on 30th of May, where they said all power plants, I think except for three, will be shut down in '21 and the remaining in '22. They said that was the earliest point in time where shutdown would be possible in this initial formulation aid. Then they changed that. And then they began to calculate, "Oh, we have no change dates, can we do that?" They did it on the basis of the reference production volumes, and they realized that this wouldn't work. And we've quoted that in paragraph 297 of our reply. We point you to an email from the Federal Ministry of Environment where they say they received a call from the state chancellery. And that was on 28th of June, two days before the second and third reading of the Act and Parliament. And I now quote what we have written in paragraph 297 of the rejoinder. "I have just talked to Mr. Ruskin of the federal chancellery on the telephone again. The chancellery requests the application of the quantities provided for under the ATG 2002. There's according to the federal chancellery, the first table, the tables with different calculation methods, shall not be recalculated on the basis of the figures resulting from previous years." That means they were in discussion whether to use actual production instead of reference production volumes. They realized, we've explained this, reference production volumes don't work. And then they got an instruction not to change anything. This is from a political point of view, clearly understandable. If you decide, or if you realize two days before a third reading that what you've agreed on, what is published in media, won't work, you say, "Oh, no, no, no questions." And there's another point why the government knew that reference production volumes wouldn't work. If you look into the official explanation for the 11th Amendment, the lifetime extension, and the explanatory part, I think it's on the second page, I would have to look it up. There they speak about the availability of power plants in the coming years. And they say, "We use reduced reference production volumes due to the higher influx of renewable energies." They say, "We reduce the ATG 2002 figures by 5% from 2017 and by 10% by 2021." Now, that's from memory. If it's not entirely correct, you have to look it up. So they knew RPVs wouldn't work. They identified that in their calculations, and they nevertheless pushed on. And we have said in our reply, they in the meantime have realized it, and we submitted, I think, as one of the exhibits, an excerpt from their constitutional law submissions where they readily submit and say, "Well, the RPVs will not be able to use up." So what you have here is they relied on outdated methods, the first instance, that might have worked with the 2021-2022 shutdowns. That was changed after political discussion. Then they calculated again. Then they realized, "Oh, it won't work." And they got an instruction not to recalculate it again and to push this through. And that preliminary answers your questions. My colleague, Mr. Anderson, will deal with that in more detail when he comes to his section. And the tribunal then still has questions, so that we're happy to answer that in more detail again in the posterior briefs.
Question is, the other question I had is, as of the evidence that these OEPVs had no value according to the claimants, as of the 13th Amendment, in '06 August 2011?
Mr. President, I think the preliminary answer to that, which will also be dealt with in more detail, is that they had no value is the result of the hard shutdown days, 2015, '17, '19. And the government knew that these hard shutdown days wouldn't work. If you want to rely on the transferability of the electricity volumes and you know that at least the part will not work, then you know what you've devised is not suitable.
Assuming now, contrary to what you submit now, is that the OEPVs had a certain value as of the 6th of August 2011 fragment, would then there be an expropriation?
Well, I think the standard answer for finding an indirect expropriation is that the value has been destroyed completely, or at least to a large extent. If you go down to numbers, it's somewhere around 95% or more. And we say they had absolutely no value. They cannot be sold. No one wants to have them.
The assumption was that they would have value, contrary to your case.
One second. Mr. President, my colleague pointed out that Ms. Harden seems to say that, or agrees that they could not be sold in 2011 and cannot be sold today. So the question is indeed a hypothetical one. But I don't think I can give you right now an answer to that because very much, of course, if you want to evaluate expression will depend on the specifics, what that value would be. As of now, both parties say it couldn't be sold. If it can't be sold, then it doesn't have a value.
Yeah, but is it -- wait, wait a moment. Is it then your case, because that begs the next question. If they might get a value in the future, do they have already inherent value on the 6th of August 2011? It may become philosophical, actually.
No, I think, Mr. President, well, usually the requirement for an expropriation is a long-lasting, not merely intermediary deprivation of the value. What we say and what our experts say, and what at least Ms. Harden also agrees to until today, is that they cannot be sold. And whether they get any value at the moment is dependent on so many factors that our experts say this is speculation, and therefore they cannot be assigned any value today. But as I said, that is why Navigant has suggested that in order to avoid a potential double recovery, that the tribunal should, I think, what was it, the directors? Or that we should hand over any proceeds from a sale of the volumes? We say it's completely unlikely that they will, that they can be sold. But it's a hypothetical. But if you assume that hypothetical, then any risk, which I presume you might see, that you award compensation for them and then they get value, could be handled by handing over the proceeds from any such sale. But my colleague, Mr. Anderson--
My add just on that question. It is part of our case that the lock-in effect, the forced sale situation as such, that we could not, we couldn't sell them at the time of, in 2011, and it was not possible to foresee that we could sell them for many, many years, in itself is an indirect expropriation. That is, just to be clear, it's not only the value loss, it's the use and enjoyment of these volumes. We could not produce them ourselves, and we ended up in a situation where we couldn't sell them, at least not in almost 10 years. So just to be clear on the legal ground, I wish to point that out.
Right. Please continue.
Well, thank you. Then I will continue with the next highly disputed topic, and that is the atom consents and the umbrella clause. Let me first recall for you some pertinent facts, which we consider relevant for your legal evaluation. The atom consents was signed by claimant Wattenfall GmbH. At that time, HEW. I've explained this on day one, and you'll find it in the transcript. At the time it was signed, HEW was already controlled by Wattenfall AB. That has been explained in our memorial. They had 25.1% of the shares and a control agreement for the further 25.1% of the shares. So they exercised control over the majority of the shares of HEW. We have also explained, and that is set out in the witness statement of Dr. Tim, the former CEO of HEW, that HEW was induced into signing the atom consents after a personal discussion with Chancellor Spöder. They had not been invited to the negotiations. They had been unwilling to sign it. And it was in a personal meeting when they were convinced. And lastly, we think also relevant for a legal evaluation from an international law perspective, the Energy Charter Treaty was already applicable since 1998 and therefore applies also to Wattenfall and Wattenfall's investments. Now, what does the atom consents contain? And when I speak here of explicit promises of the state, that does not yet mean it is a legal allegation. It's a factual description of what's in there. And we think it's relevant to recap briefly that there are explicit promises of the state and corresponding obligations of the operators. The atom consents says that the federal government should prepare a draft amendment. It will take no step to change the safety standard. It will ensure the undisturbed operation of the installations, and it will not take, take no steps that will discriminate. On the other hand, you have clear obligations or clear statements that the operators will do something. RWE withdraws the permit applications. It withdraws the legal actions. All legal and factual claims are extinguished. And the provision which has been, which the members of the tribunal have discussed with Professor Papier on the final storage. The energy supply companies shall not demand repayment. The costs for keeping it open shall be assumed by the companies. And they will make no repayment claims. Why do we point this out? Now, that, the reason for that is shown in the next slide, which is a demonstrative exhibit, which shows you what these provisions are. You see in blue the promises by the state, and you see in red the undertakings, however you call it, by the operators. Always with a reference to where you find it in the atom consents and what it means. And you will see that the arrows, it's a timeline. The arrows all, nearly all point into the future. There are only few arrows which are relatively short. That is the withdrawal of legal action and the issuing of transport license. But all other arrows show these are continuing obligations which go into the future. You find the timeline at the bottom of references where you find this in the record. And I just note an error. I think the government draft of the 2002 amendment was on 11th September and not on 1st of September. But so what you have is an agreement, which pursuant also to its wording, is in due to set the framework for future operations and doesn't include a one-off transaction. Doesn't say, "Well, you waive this, and we give you that, and thereby the atom content is finished." It's also not finished with the implementation into law. But according to its wording, they are not limited in time. Now, why is that relevant?
And just before you move on from that slide, which of the obligations do you say was violated in breach of obligations under the ECT?
We refer to the third blue arrow from above, no discrimination, including tax. The fourth blue arrow, no changes of safety standards. And the second last blue arrow, the assurance of undisturbed operation during the residual lifespan. These are the obligations to which we have referred in our submissions to you. Now, when you now want to evaluate the atom consents from the starting point of the Energy Charter Treaty, the logical starting point is 266 ECT. The treaty instructs you to apply the Energy Charter Treaty and international law. And while the plain vanilla case of an umbrella clause is that you might have an obligation under national law which is elevated, the very wording is so broad, it's any obligation entered into, that at least your framework with which you evaluate this is international law. We know that the atom consents concerns certain statements made by the federal government of the Federal Republic of Germany to an investor, HEW, which in our view is already, at that time, due to foreign control, was an investor of another contracting party, or at least made to an investment, HEW, of an investor, that is Wattenfall AB. Under international law, whether these statements are attributable to Germany under the principles of state responsibility, and even if there would be ultra-virus acts, they can, as a matter of principle, be attributed to Germany. So what does that mean if you now apply 10-1 last sentence? You know it's an agreement. The wording says so. Does it contain obligations? Well, the test for an obligation under international law, if international is determined there must be an obligation, is a bit unclear. But we think for any contract, it's very clear. The first test is read it. Read it and determine for yourself, does that amount to an obligation? Whether it's legally binding is the second step. And we think that Professor Kischel has done that, in his opinion, quite exhaustively. He has reviewed the atom consents from start to finish. He has evaluated that, even if it's from the perspective of German law. The main test still is, is it binding according to the will of the parties? And has not given a blunt statement that it's binding. He said, "Well, there are harder provisions, there are softer provisions, but if you evaluate it in total," this in his view amounts that it is in total binding. And he also points to the procedure under which it was signed. And even Professor Papier has admitted that, although he strongly disagrees, that the atom content might be binding because, totally because it contains certain elements where the government acts as the highest administrative authority and others where it might not have acted. But even there, he says, "It might be possible." So he hasn't contested that there might be obligations in there which are binding. In that respect, I think it's noteworthy to point again to the discussion which you, Professor Lowe, and you, Judge Baurer, had, I think, with Professor Papier, on the obligations for the final storage. His response was, "This wouldn't be binding and couldn't be binding since these are lender matters." And when we read the transcript, once we received it, it struck us with all due respect as being flatly wrong because it's in the atomic law explicitly stated that final storage is within the jurisdiction of the federal government. It's in section 9A3. He's right on many points. Many, many issues on atomic law are handled by the lender. Even where you have federal commission, the government can, federal government can issue instructions. But this 4.7 is explicitly task of the federal government. The federal government operates and constructs final storage. It can delegate that to individuals, which it did in the atom consents. They have, they have to pay for it. But this is a clear something within the government's authority. So what should you do with the constitutional law issues raised by them? Various problems were raised, whether the government can sign, whether it was authorized to do so, although no one ever has contested that until today. We think that the evidence and the testimony given by Professor Papier is quite convincing. If there are issues of unconstitutionality, they are at least not obvious. Even Professor Papier couldn't pinpoint to a decided case where it was said that the government cannot sign away its right to introduce legislation or can it is promise not to do so. But we are not sure you really need to go into this and decide this. Professor Lowe, you pointed out on the first day, you pointed a question to us which you now would like to take up again. You said, "Well, that's not the same as the question with the third parties and had to rely upon a statement." And I think you pointed to the nuclear tests case and the issue of unilateral statements made by a state. Now, as Dr. Conrad pointed out in her view, the nuclear tests case and unilateral statements only apply in relation to states and on the level of international law. Now, notwithstanding that the nuclear test case is from 1974 and the law has developed since then, and that we have here statements made by the government towards an investment of a foreign investor, or as we even say, statements made by the government directly to foreign investor, it is argued also in the literature. You see an excerpt from an article by Professor Reisman, which we have submitted, that unilateral commitments can exist also in investment law. That we have quoted that in our reply. And also in Newcom and Paradel say that even if on a domestic law, the unilateral conduct of the state does not give rise to domestic legal obligation. Or if a commitment given in a contract is not legally binding, in some circumstances, the host state's conduct may give rise to an independent obligation under international law and forcible under an observance of undertakings clause. We have expounded this in our reply in paragraph 496 to 501. You might also wish to take a look at, with the exception of you, Professor Lowe, I think you know the case quite well, Tokada Solopoulos, where this was, I think, reviewed under the, under this, through the framework of Estoppel. We say that those constitutional law objections which are now raised can well be considered irrelevant by you under these principles. And that is for the following reason. As an exit tribunal, you primarily apply international law. And even if you have to apply national law for a certain matter, there should always be the check by international law. What we have here is a very specific case. We do not have only a contract, a one-off transaction. We have a contract which wasn't only relied on for making further investments. That is what my colleague, Mr. Anderson, will detail. It was implemented by the parties. It was implemented into law, and it was performed over the years. You saw these arrows. In the atom consents, the parties agreed to a framework which was implemented, which was performed, which was reaffirmed again in 2011. The operators have complied with their obligations. At least respondent hasn't put forward, I think, any evidence that they have not complied with that. And the split between the parties, as Professor Kischel pointed out, came only in 2010, when the government decided to raise a nuclear fuel tax. And the operator said, "You can't do that." And pointed this out in the atom consent. In short, we say that the government and respondent cannot have it both ways. You cannot conclude an agreement in an untechnical way with operators, including foreign investors, have them rely on that, implement, waive rights, have them comply with that over years, and then when the circumstances change, unilaterally change the rules of the game and say, "Well, this is not binding, by the way, although it has been performed and complied over the years." That is why you think, why we think, members of the tribunal, you can disregard those constitutional law objections either under the principle of Estoppel or directly look at the atom consents from the perspective of international and look at it, what it is. Promises given by the government for a structured phase-out, as it said, and long-lasting obligations, which were now disregarded by the government. We think this falls under the umbrella clause. Thank you very much. If you have no questions to that, my colleagues will take over.
It's a mind clarifying question, really. And of the three obligations you identify under the ECT on your slide 41.
Yes.
And if we put to one side the discrimination provision as being a matter essentially within the tax question and the safety standards as not being something that respondent is relying on, it seems to come down essentially to that fourth sentence in Roman 3, paragraph 1. "Subject to compliance with the requirements under nuclear law, the federal government will ensure the undisturbed operation of the installations." And is that essentially, is that the heart of your case?
That is the heart of the case as we, if you discount or put aside for a moment the NEPV issue. That article which you read or that paragraph starts with, I think, during the residual lifespans.
Yes.
And that are, that in the atom consents is the amount of time used, necessary to use up the OEPV. What the government said is, "You take these volumes, you may operate. We leave you in peace. You may, you could subsume this even under 10-1, use and enjoyment of investments. We won't disturb you, and we won't interfere. But when it's over, it's over." And we're saying what the 13th Amendment did by shutting down criminal auto at-had volumes is directly contrary to this.
Now, that sentence, and the one which precedes it, which you've just referred to, come under the heading Safe 1, Safety Standards/Government Supervision. But your case is that the assurance of undisturbed operation of the installations is not something that is given solely in the context of there being no change in safety standards and government supervision, but is something which is of general application and equally precluded the phase-out provisions?
That is a very good question, Professor Lowe. I think that those two sentences are different facets of the same issue. What the government did here, no, let's go back. Under the safety philosophy, as it was existing under the 13th Amendment, a plant which fulfilled safety criteria was allowed to operate, full stop. Germany has admitted that even the plants which were shut down fulfilled the safety criteria, full stop. But under the 13th Amendment, then-- But under the 13th Amendment, they're no longer allowed to operate. So that is the fundamental change, which is at the same time both a change of the safety regulations and the safety philosophy and of the promise not to disturb the operation. I would need to think whether you could have the one or the others, but the important point really is it refers to the volumes and essentially gives you a promise that you may use up the volumes. That was the counter, I think it's in the preamble of the atom consents where it says the government wants to put limits on the operating lifetime and in return, you'll get the volumes. You get the volumes and we won't disturb you, you may use them up in peace. And that's what the government prevented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the tribunal. I will continue now with addressing some of the fair and equitable treatment issues. I will revisit the main features of claimants' claim when it comes to fair and equitable treatment and I'll also try to answer the questions that the tribunal raised during opening and also the written questions that we received the other day. And so I will limit my comments to the components when it comes to stability of the legal framework, legitimate expectations regarding that, and then I will answer the questions. So, and then there we go. Yes. So starting with the issue, what is required for expectations to be legitimate and protected in this case? And well, first, to start with, there must be an expectation that has been created by conduct attributable to the states. And we have three different categories of, well, conduct, I would say, here. There is no dispute that specific promises or representations to a foreign investors regarding the legal framework creates legitimate expectations. And in this case, it's our case that the respondent has made such representations in the atom consents. And these were representations aimed at establishing stability and planning security for the plants. So these statements, the atom consents as such, created legitimate expectations. And this is true, we would say, irrespective of whether that agreement is binding under German law. And I'll refer, I have two references on this slide. One is to Tall, Argentina, and the other one is Mickula, from which it follows that in the conduct of the state is sufficient if that conduct is such so as to make an investor believe that an obligation existed. And during opening, the first day, I think Professor Lowe asked a question whether it was our, why our claim required that a representation regarding the stability of the legal framework had been made. And the answer there is no. We do rely on the specific promises and representations in the atom consents and the conduct of the German government, but we say alternatively that the legislation as such, the 2002 amendment which incorporated the atom consents, created legitimate expectations as to the stability of those rules and that structure that was implemented into law going forward. And again, I noted this in the opening statement, we are not dealing with the broad, general type of legislation. We are dealing with legislation, the 2002 amendment, that actually incorporates the agreement made and which sets forth individual rights. And I'm talking about the volumes for each plant and allocates them to each plant. And this type of legislation, we argue, inherently creates legitimate expectations. There was, so this is one component. We have, these measures have created expectations. There was reliance, we've been over this in the opening statement, and I will not go through that evidence again, but I would like to make one observation when it comes to the evidence that we have heard these two weeks when it comes to reliance, and that is we've heard a lot of evidence regarding the time period 2007, 2009 going forward and the, well, mostly from respondent, describing the problems that claimants had with the plants, the incidents and the organization and so forth. What is, and that argument is brought, as we understand it basically, to say that, well, claimants were sloppy operators and it's their own fault that there was a lot of volumes left when they were shut down. However, what is clear from this evidence is also that claimants invested heavily into their plants to ensure that they would be compliant with the nuclear law. And they took a number of measures to improve areas where there was room for improvement. And I went back to look at the size of the investments in this period, 2007 to 2010. Claimants invested some 400 million euros in OpEx and CapEx during this period in the criminal plant. And I'll refer you to the table that Dr. Blasig and Mr. Balki included in their presentation. And there is plenty of evidence also dealing with the efforts that claimants made to try to solve the organizational issues during this period so as to be ready to restart the plant in 2012. And indeed, I would say that the evidence here shows that these efforts had an effect and that claimants would have been ready to restart, and that's an issue that we'll come back to. But if anything, I think this demonstrates reliance. Four years standing still, investing heavily, taking all kinds of measures in the hope that you should be able to restart soon and be able to produce electricity and make profit. So, moving on, what was then claimants entitled to expect? We have said that, we do not say that Article 10 was, is a absolute stabilization clause that freezes the legal framework, and that is still our position. Claimants would have had to expect that there could be changes to the regulatory framework, that there could be new and updated safety requirements imposed on claimants' plants. We're not saying that that could not be expected, that following Fukushima, for instance, new requirements would be imposed, that would entail costs and so forth. However, it could not be reasonably expected, we argue, that the operating license and the right to produce the volumes that had been agreed in the atom consents and then incorporated into 2002 amendment, that these rights were withdrawn. These were the very basic foundation for claimants' operations, all those investments going into the plant, that they could be withdrawn without there being any imminent danger, without there being any basis for shutting down the plant in the Atomic Energy Act and without any compensation. That, we say that that goes, that is, that could not be expected, that goes beyond the limit.
Could you deal specifically with the question of the imposition, the imposition of the fixed shutdown dates? And that's not quite the same as with not expecting withdrawal?
Withdrawal of the license? Well, it's the same there, because the agreement made was that the volumes could be produced and without time limitations. There was only a volume limitation. They could be exhausted, which meant for claimants that were in a standstill position and that that standstills will not affect your right to produce. So, yes, claimants, that ends up in the same basket. This is not something the claimants should have expected with the framework as it looked like.
But would it have been in the same basket if the phased shutdown dates had in fact enabled the operators to use the OEPVs before the fixed date? And I'm trying to pin down exactly what the breach is, whether it's in the scheme of the fixed date phase-out or whether it's in the choice of specific dates or what?
I haven't reflected on that issue, but it's a good question. I would, I would say that a limitation, any limitation that would prevent claimants from actually producing its own volumes would go beyond the expectations in its own plant. Yeah.
You might like to add a sentence or two just to explain why the right to produce rather than transfer OEPVs and produce in own plants was critical. And to finish off my point on this, it was, I thought it was paradoxical at the beginning that you said that claimants could have expected changes in safety standards and updating and things like that, where in fact that sentence appears in a paragraph where the one thing that does seem to be ruled out explicitly is changes of some kind or other in safety standards. It doesn't actually explicitly require apply to other changes such as the fixed dates on production schedules.
Okay, on that, we have not interpreted that provision to preclude ordinary updates of safety standards, but rather a fundamental change in the philosophy as we are, as we have here, and that that could not be expected. Sorry, what was, now I forget, what was the first question?
Why is it important to produce in own plants?
Well, importance to produce in own, well, first, that would be an economical issue because you would make, I would assume, better profits if you produce the volumes in your own plants than if you sold them.
The investment?
Yeah. Well, so you could recoup all the investments that was made in the plant and get a reasonable return. So, so that's, that is basically our case on legitimate expectation and the stability component in the FET, FET claim. The implementation of the 13th Amendment frustrated these expectations and thereby it demands to a breach of the fair and equitable treatment standard. The respondent was free to implement that law, but it will then have to bear the consequences of that under the energy charter treaty. During the opening, there was another question in connection with this, and that was, well, does it matter that the 13th Amendment was implemented as a result of the Fukushima accident? And, well, it didn't come out of the blue, there was a reason behind this. For our purposes, I would say the answer to that is no. It does not matter that the 13th Amendment was introduced after the Fukushima accidents. One first point is that the reason for the introduction was not lessons learned from Fukushima. These were not evaluated, that is clear from the evidence. The reason was, as been pointed out repeatedly here, this perceived changed, changed in the public perception. But here, there was no imminent danger, there was no safety concerns, and this has not even been suggested. And there were no new risks, as it was put by respondent's counsel at the opening. So when you have no exceptional circumstances, no new risks, no events that could trigger an exception under the treaty that would allow a deviation from fair and equitable treatment, well, it doesn't matter. It's the treatment that matters and whether that treatment was fair and equitable, that is what was matter, what matters. And there was another issue raised here, and I don't know whether that was a question, but whether the abruptness as such had any significance, you know, that the legislation was very quickly introduced and whether that has any implication. Well, that in itself is not a critical component for our claim. I think you could say that it illustrates the focus that the German government had on public perception rather than evaluating the impact on other interests.
Mr. Andersen, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
In your second bullet point, you say the 13th Amendment was introduced to satisfy a perceived change in public perception. What occasioned this perceived change in public perception according to you?
Well, we don't know. The basis for that was the government, the conclusion by the government's own commission, the FX Commission. They didn't, so far as I know, made any polls or investigations as to what the public perception really was and whether that had been changed, but they came to a conclusion that that was probably the case and as a result of Fukushima. And that was the advice that they later on gave to the German government.
Is it your case that the change in the public perception in 2011 prior to the 13th Amendment but after the Fukushima accident was not caused by the Fukushima accident, this change in public perception?
Well, I don't even know if there was indeed a change in the public perception, but I assume that the FX Commission came to the conclusion that it depended on Fukushima. That seems to be a natural conclusion.
Thank you.
So, another question that was raised during opening by Professor Lowe, I think, is whether it's claimant's case that the 13th Amendment was arbitrary as a whole, as I understood the question, or whether that contention is limited to the treatment of the criminal plant. And the answer is really both. There are a number of features with the 13th Amendment that was arbitrary, and I'll try to explain that if we start with that. I mean, it was a piece of legislation that was based on the perceived view of a change in the public perception. And it's a very fair question, so why would that be, why would that make the law arbitrary or unfair in a way? And as Professor Obey pointed out, no, we are not saying that. It could be, it could be It could be, it could be a very well, a good reason to implement law. What I think is critical in this case is the complete focus on public perception and lack of consideration of other interests. And that prioritization that made this law arbitrary. And a couple of points here. The reactor safety commission's report, which concluded that though there were no risks and the German plants were robust and safe, was not considered, and we know this because the decision was taken before the report was issued. And I refer you to the evidence that we have provided on this point. The evaluation of the reports on Fukushima were not part of the consideration. And this follows also from the fact that the law was enacted before these reports were issued. Claimants were not heard, and I'll come back to that. There was no proper evaluation how this law would indeed affect claimants. There was no weighing of different interests there. Another, I think, point that I think illustrates fairness is is this solution that Germany adopted to deal with the compensation issue. The solution that just let claimants keep the old volumes and we make a calculation as best as we can. It shows a margin. It's not, let them keep the old volumes, it's not our problem if those cannot be sold or the sky falls down. By doing that, respondent shifted the entire risk of the effects of this legislation to claimants. And that, I think, illustrates a lack of consideration of claimants' interests. And then we add to that the shutdown dates, the determination of the shutdown dates. And as Dr. Hap explained, well, on 13th of May, the government's draft bill suggests 2021 and 2022 as the end dates, being the end dates for phase out of nuclear power at the earliest point in time. Six days later, there's a different schedule, staggered shutdown rates. Where is the evaluation and analysis of the impact of that measure, that change? And then we have the reference production volumes, the use of outdated volumes to calculate this margin. Is that, I mean, the question, I guess, is that objective decision making based on faraway evaluation of all facts and interests involved? We submit it's not. And I think the whole attitude is illustrated by respondent's position in this arbitration as well when it comes to the assessment of the impact on claimants that this legislation had. Here, it is argued that there was no adverse impact, and we will prove that with an ex post assessment. Now, how did respondent ensure that there will be no adverse impact on claimants if that would depend on an ex post assessment and an assumed sale of volumes 10 years later? So, yes, we do say that there are a number of arbitrary elements with this legislation. What is important, of course, for us is the treatment of claimants. So, we're not asking the tribunal to find that the entire legislation was arbitrary, but whether the treatment of claimant was. And when it comes to the treatment of the criminal plant, I mean, the evidentiary situation is exactly the same today as it was at opening. But we argued and we have submitted evidence, criminal was included merely as a result of political lobbying. And that case is still there. Evidence, that's not been answered.
Can I ask a clear legal question? And supposing that we are with you on the argument that there is a defective decision-making process in the sense that there was no objective basis decision for the decision, claimants were not given a right to be heard and so on. What is the consequence of that in monetary terms? And if the thing that is proved is a breach of that procedural requirement, how should the tribunal approach the question of quantum? Should it assume that all of the damages that you've alleged flowed from that?
Yes, I do think that it's a fair assumption to say that if this had been done and a proper evaluation had been done of the impacts on claimants, that the solution would have been the solution that did not cause damage to claimant. That, for instance, the criminal plant would not have been shut down. That in itself would more or less have removed all the damage relating to the O E P V and criminal and the license. So, yes.
But that's exactly my concern. And is it enough that the tribunal should find that there was no opportunity for a fair hearing, that there was no prior calculation of the effect on O E P Vs and so on? Or must it also find that if there had been proper hearing and proper calculations, the respondent would have come to a different decision?
Well, I mean, it's all in the hypothetical, but I guess you would have to take that additional step in order to be satisfied that there is some form of causation between the breach and the loss. So, I would say that you would have to go the extra step. So, I will now turn to the, oh, sorry, I went the wrong way. Tribunal's question number 11 relating to fair and equitable treatment standard. And there will be some overlap now because the questions that I've already been commenting on, they overlap with question number 11. So, and I included the question in the slide. First, I would like to make, well, one reservation as regards the premise for this question and the idea or the request that we propose. Claimants come up with a proposal on what the German government should have done differently. What is relevant to our claim is what was actually done and how that affected claimants, and it's this that needs to be assessed, not what could have been done. And also the question, what could have been done differently is a rather question, I think, that respondent should have asked itself before it implemented this legislation. And secondly, when it comes to the premise as such, now, this premise as formulated includes the shutdown of criminal plant, the revocation of the new volumes, and the introduction of fixed end dates. And these are the very measures that claimants argue amount to unlawful expropriation, breaches, umbrella clause and so forth. So to be very clear, we do not accept this premise. And we are very far, we're discussing a scenario which is very far from the case that we are making. So again, then, what could respondent have done differently? Well, first, a couple of general observations. There was no imminent danger. Germany had time to evaluate the effects of this legislation and how it could be implemented without causing damage to claimants. German government was about to shut down an entire industry, and it could be expected, I think, that in this situation that they would have heard claimants thoroughly analyzed how this could be implemented without causing damage. And the point of departure for the implementation as such must be, I submit, that the German government would have had to ensure that claimants' investments were not destroyed as a result of this legislation. So what couldn't they have done differently? Well, to start with, I think respondent could have allowed criminal to continue operating. This would have solved not only claimants' problems with the O E P V, of course. It would have solved the Brinspeter volumes as well because had criminal been allowed to operate, there wouldn't have been any oversupply of volumes. It is as simple as that when it comes to these issues. Had criminal been allowed to operate and there was no reason for not allowing that, there wouldn't have been any, any damage wouldn't be caused to, in this respect, when it comes to old volumes. If the premise is that criminal had to be shut down with the same shutdown dates, well, then respondent should have offered compensation. And this could have been structured in different ways. But the essential issue, again, I think, is the shifting of risk. I think the German government should have assumed the risk for the O E P V. That risk should not have been shifted over to claimants for. I'm moving to question 11A. For example, which plant should have been shut down instead of criminal? Or if none, how would the shutdown schedule have been met? Well, here we submit that no plant should have been shut down instead of criminal. All plants were safe. And a few months earlier, all plants that had been licensed under the 1977 safety criteria and which had been taken into operation after 1981 were regarded as new plants and given 14 years of additional volumes. Now, if a certain group of plants had to be selected for continued operation, it should have been all of the new plants, including criminal. The inclusion of criminal among the still operating plant would not have delayed the final date for the phase out of nuclear power. That could still be achieved within 2022. Criminal would be able to produce its, and Brinspeter's volumes within that date.
But would that have required other plants, some other plants to produce less?
No, not that I can see, I mean, what is the requirement?
Well, and that's the question. And if a plant, if the production is being met by X minus kummel plants, to add kummel's production looks on one level as though it's producing more electricity than is needed. And in the absence of a means of storing all of that electricity, would it not have been a consequential drop in the output of somebody else?
This is probably beyond my expertise as a lawyer, but I would assume that to have more electricity than, that hadn't been a problem before. Germany is exporting electricity. I don't think that would be a concern of the German government to have more electricity that could be exported to other countries. So, I'm not clear, but if, so when it comes to the shutdown schedule again, the revision of the shutdown schedule that was made between 13th of May and 6th of June, when the German government went from 2021, 2022 to this staggered phase out, there was no, there is no explanation for why that was necessary. And so it's very, it's a difficult condition for claimants to accept that this schedule had to be maintained. This was just a political agreement, a concession made by a government due to pressure from the lender governments. So, what we're saying is that the final goal could have been achieved within 2022. And Germany could have kept that initial structure that they had 2021, 2022. Another adjustment that could have been made could have been to set a deadline for the loading of the core instead of a hard shutdown date. Now, this would have avoided problem created by the shutdown dates, that the core couldn't be loaded. For example, when you approach the final deadline, you don't want to load up the core again. And that creates this uncertainty in the demand at the end of this period. That is another adjustment that could have been made. German government could have looked at the plant selection and considered how much volumes a plant had left and whether the controlling company would have had an alternative plant in operation to which volumes could be transferred. Now, in claimant's case, claimants ended up with only, all of their plants being shut down and volumes left to be sold, which they could not say. So, I'm moving on to question 11B. And this again overlaps a bit. What factors respondent could have considered that would have led it to adopt a different approach to the determination of the shutdown dates? The main factor, I think, that respondent should have considered is its decision, is that the decision to shut down criminal, put claimants in this situation where they could not produce any volumes in their own plants and where they were forced to try to sell? And this meant, and respondent knew this, that any income from the O E P V could only be expected in the future, way down the road. Now, that approach in itself, the shifting of that risk for to bear, for claimants to bear the risk, the consequences of the Thirteenth Amendment, I would say it is inherently unfair in itself. Respondent should have taken over that risk, agreed to keep claimants harmless, and that could have been done in different ways. On a more detailed level, if assuming that respondent was allowed indeed to shift all the risk to claimants, at least they should have performed a detailed assessment of the utilization data for all nuclear power plants. It should have considered the most recent utilization patterns. It should have consulted with each of the operators to get an understanding on how does it look like, what's your plans, your future projections, rather than using these reference production volumes. So with that, I'm ready with the F E T claim and the questions. And I hand over to my colleague, Mr. Ranga. And I hand over to my colleague, Mr. Ranga.
Thank you. May I start with a question, which is how much time do we have left, effectively speaking?
So the total time so far has been three hours and 29 minutes. You have used one hour and 52 minutes, which leaves you with one hour and 38 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we will move on now to the next subject matter for the closing, which is decommissioning. This is obviously, obviously something which relates to quantum in this case, but we, since you have heard five experts on this topic during the course of these two weeks, we thought that we should address this as a separate issue before going into the other aspects of quantum. And when doing that, I will also address the tribunal's question 18 as the last point that I will, that I will take you to. Now, just to set the, the framework for, for this part of our presentation, you have heard, as I said, five experts, three relied upon by claimants, Professor Tomauske, Mr. Hackel, and Mr. Charles. We say that their approach and their analysis is correct. They have used, as you can see in the last bullet point, the NIS reports as a basis. They have applied a cost-specific calculation and assessment. And this is what you should take as a basis for your assessment when looking at, at these issues. Now, what respondent has done is different. They have retained Mrs. Seiler, first of all, not to address and rely on plant-specific data, but rather to make assumptions and further assumptions when it comes to these issues. And I will come back to this now as part of my presentation. As I said, the case from our side is relatively simple in this respect. What we're saying is that you have contemporaneous data, you have the NIS reports from 2010, They are plant-specific and use the so-called bottom-up approach, which virtually all experts agree on is the correct approach, apart from Mrs. Seiler. You will recall that Mr. Cordes throughout his testimony referred in several instances to EWN using a bottom-up approach. So that, I think, is pretty clear. And the reason why this needs to be done is that every nuclear power plant is different. There are plant-specific issues related to size, the site, and other aspects that need to be taken into account when you make an estimate in this respect. And the only plant-specific estimate that you have is NIS. Now, there were three approaches or three methods used by Mrs. Seiler, which were all addressed by Professor Tomauske in his presentation. And as Professor Tomauske explained, and as we have explained in our submissions, those approaches are fundamentally flawed, and you will see that during the course of this presentation. Now, as a starting point, and just to emphasize the relevance and importance of NIS data, one should be reminded that in December 2011, the respondent has actually made statements to the effect that NIS and the NIS data is the data that one should rely upon for the purposes of estimating decommissioning costs. And what you have in front of you is Exhibit SL10, which is a report to the Audit Committee of the German Bundestag on aspects of the formation of reserves in the nuclear energy sector from December 2011. This was a, this report includes input from three ministries, including the Ministry for the Environment, which is of course the ministry responsible for nuclear decommissioning in Germany, and the Ministry of Finance, which among other things is the owner of EWN and the financer of EWN. And you can see here on, on the slide that what is stated in this document is, among other things, that "in view of the limited availability of such services," and such services being decommissioning services, "owing to the specific nature of the tasks, an in-depth knowledge of cost structure and magnitude therefore rests by its very nature not with the nuclear power supervisory authorities, but solely with the companies and with experts commissioned by the companies, such as obviously NIS, who together boast many years of experience in this area." And I should say perhaps by way of background that this document was prepared in order to assess whether there should be a state agency in Germany to assess decommissioning costs, but the conclusion was, for the reasons that you can see on the slides, that that would not be possible. There was no state agency that had the knowledge and experience of NIS and other experts commissioned by, by the companies such as GNS for waste. That would be possible to, to make these assessments. And you have two other extracts, I should say, on the slides confirming that that was indeed the case. And as you can see on the, on the third slide, all three ministries said that there is no reason to doubt this methodology of calculation of costs for the decommissioning and dismantling Now, I referred to Mrs. Seiler earlier, which I think can be characterized as a main expert from respondent when it comes to decommission. He has submitted two relatively large reports and he was here to testify. As we pointed out, what he has done is not a cost-specific or site-specific calculation, it's something completely different, and it doesn't hold up to scrutiny. There is a very interesting document submitted by Mrs. Seiler in this arbitration, and is a document which was written by some of his colleagues at the Erko Institute. And the study was prepared to be sent to the European Parliament, which was, which it was in, in 2013. And as you can see, the study that we are talking about identified best practices in the organization of the decommissioning projects in Germany and France. And it's quite a comprehensive report. It was submitted as Silas Exhibit 36. And as you can see here, further on on the slides, on page, one of the first pages in the document, you see that the Erko Institute, three authors of the Erko Institute, colleagues and Mrs. Seiler, were the authors of this report, one of them being Mr. Gerhard Schmidt, whom Mrs. Seiler agreed was one of the ones that had helped him with his report and who was here to assist him during the course of the two weeks. The report was also made with the assistance of EWN and the Federal Ministry of Finance in Germany. So let's have a look at this document and see how it fits in with Mrs. Seiler's approach. One thing that Mrs. Seiler says is that the costs for each decommissioning project are basically the same. He makes a small distinction between boiling water reactors and pressurized water reactors, but that's pretty much as far as he goes. He calls it basically a standard procedure. It doesn't really matter the size or the plant-specific issues relating to a nuclear power plant, it's a standardized procedure. His colleagues do not agree. Here's some passages from pages 16 and 87, where it says that "as decommissioning of nuclear reactors has not reached and will never reach the stage of a standardized procedure," and then they go on. And then they emphasize that "cost estimates are only reliable if they are based on a complete, well-planned, and regularly updated calculation scheme and if escalations well as risks are carefully considered." We're very far from the standardized procedure here. And there are other statements to that effect in the document. You have on the slide now, page 44, which emphasizes the importance of facility-specific figures, and that's the first highlight. And the second highlight reads, "the experiences made within the decommissioning of one reactor is highly valuable but often specific to a given reactor type and site." If we move on, Mrs. Seiler makes the proposition that size and duration doesn't really matter. As we have explained, that is completely incorrect, and it seems that also respondent does not agree, at least in its capacity as a sovereign state, not in this arbitration, where it says in, in a response to parliamentary inquiry, this is an exhibit to Tomauske's expert report, where they say that "the costs for decommissioning and dismantling a nuclear power plant depend on many different factors, such as the type and size of the plant, the decommissioning concept, and the time at which decommissioning can start." So clearly, Germany does not agree with Mrs. Seiler's approach. Going back to Mrs. Seiler's colleagues, there are also other interesting statements when it comes to the size of the plant in this document. On page 33, it says that "in decommissioning projects, the size of the reactor plays a role with regard to certain aspects, for example, the accumulated spent fuel, the amount of generated decommissioning waste, time and workforce requirements, and the size-dependent part of the total decommissioning costs." So here we have size again as a factor. They also say, and this ties in with both size and it also ties in with the importance of having cost-specific data, where on page 44, Mrs. Seiler's colleagues say that "cost estimates performed on a more generic and less precise basis," which I think is the, probably the kindest characterization you can give to Mrs. Seiler's reports, "can only yield raw figures. These can prove to be false when detailed data becomes available. Cost figures that are taken from a smaller or different reactor type, from a reactor with a very different operating history, et cetera, cannot be reliably converted to And Mrs. Seiler also took the view, and you may recall that during cross-examination, when I questioned his conclusion that a 10-year period is a typical standard procedure. But he was unable to point to any completed decommission project in Germany where a 10-year period had been accomplished, and you have that also here on the screen. Mrs. Seiler also makes the proposition that duration doesn't really matter because you just distribute the work over a longer period of time, the same amount of work will be done, so it doesn't really matter. Professor Tomauske has addressed this extensively, I will not go through that, just like to highlight that in Mr. Seiler's colleagues' report to the European Parliament, it is said that "it is known that prolonged decommissioning causes additional costs and can give rise to serious personnel recruitment shortages." So there's a clear link between costs and duration, no doubt about that. Another important element of Mrs. Seiler's approach is to use provisions from two other plants, or two other operators, I should say, in, in Germany, RWE and AMVV, in order to assess claimants' decommissioning costs. There are many problems with this, Professor Tomauske has, has addressed them. I would just like to take you to what Mrs. Seiler's colleagues say, when they go through the, what they call the reserves of the nuclear power plants, and they are, here they are referring to the reserves of RWE and Aon, and they say that "note that converting these figures to other types and sizes of reactors yields largely unreliable numbers." And this is of course exactly what Professor Tomauske has said all along. You also heard from Mr. Cordes, who spoke at great length about his limited experience at EWN, he had only been there for five years, obviously. Now, the importance of, of that is that EWN's experience is not only spoken about by, by Mr. Cordes, but it's also being relied upon, sometimes quite heavily, by Mrs. Seiler. In SL10, Exhibit SL10, which was the Audit Committee document, that we looked at before, there is another interesting passage when it comes to the relevance of the experience of EWN when it comes, comes to decommissioning of nuclear power plants in West Germany. And what they basically say, and this is, is being highlighted here on the screen, is that "the knowledge and skills acquired during those shutdown projects can only be applied to a limited extent to the shutdown of power reactors built in the West." Let me then move on to your question 18. And the question was, "please clarify the situation of the relative decommissioning costs under the actual as opposed to the but-for scenario." So just by way of, of background, decommissioning costs are comprised of both the cost for the actual decommissioning, but also for storage and waste treatment, basically. And that has all been taken into account in the calculations that you have. What NIS does is they have, they calculate the estimated decommissioning cost for the post-operational phase, which is the phase right after the shutdown until you start decommissioning under a decommissioning license. They calculate the cost under the decommissioning, the nuclear decommissioning, as it has been referred to, and then the conventional dismantling. And I think we looked at some of these documents, particularly when I was cross-examining Mr. Seiler. So those are the three costs, so to speak, cost elements that are included in NIS, in the NIS data. GNS, they estimate the cost for the storage of waste. Now, there has been very little said about GNS, and the reason, as we understand it, is that the real battle, so to speak, is, is in this arbitration when it comes to the data of NIS. The waste cost as such is not really an issue in dispute. And this data have then been taken as a basis for the preparation of operators' financial statements, including claimants' operators, and were also used by Mr. Cashmerk for the actual and but-for scenario and the cash flow projections. If we then look at the three plants, so we start with Krimmel. so you start with Krimmel. So just to recap what would happen in the BUT-4 scenario, obviously, there would be an operation for many years in the future, using both the OAPV and the NEPV. There would be a shutdown and a decommissioning in a planned, normal manner. And you would also have, we estimate, a post-operational phase of about four to five years. That was also what NIS said in its 2010 report. What happened then in the actual scenario is that there's a forced shutdown and immediate decommissioning. You have a prolonged post-operational phase, where I believe that much of the cost difference lies when it comes to the BUT-4 scenario and the actual scenario. And Mr. Cordes spoke about that, not specifically in relation to this context, but he was emphasizing the costs, the level of costs that are incurred during the post-operational phase. That is the most expensive phase because you will still have fuel in the plant. And that requires, basically, that all operations remain the same as if the plant was operating. And that will, of course, then mean that you have higher costs. And that means that the present value of the decommissioning costs is substantially more negative in the actual scenario. The... Yes?
Finish your sentence, you've got to have a question on that.
I mean, and this may be a reason for the confusion. The nominal costs for the BUT-4 scenario are higher because in the BUT-4 scenario, the plant would continue to operate during a longer period of time. So you have more cost for spent fuel, more cost for waste. That has been taken into account in the calculation. But if you take those nominal values for the BUT-4 scenario and the actual scenario and take them to the, calculate them back to the present value, you will see that there is a difference such that the present value is substantially more negative in the actual scenario. And you have appendices to this effect in the report of Mr. Kaczmarek.
This matter of the BUT-4 versus the actual cost of decommissioning of the Krimmel plant is also addressed by Mr. Charles in his report and actually also in doing his presentation.
Yes, those were nominal amounts.
Yeah, exactly, because the question that we have is, so you see in the actual scenario, it's 2.654 billion.
Yep.
You can look it up two ways. You can look it up in his report at pages, first report thirty and thirty-one.
Yeah, I think...
Or you can look up his slide twenty-five of his presentation. Same figures.
Yep.
And so to recap, so his actual scenario for Krimmel is 2.654 billion. And the BUT-4 is 2.927.
Yep.
Then the first reaction is, of course, for the reader is, wait a moment, you're better off with the actual one than the BUT-4 one. But now you explain that these are nominal figures. But could you explain a little bit further how this works out in nominal? What is his nominal and how should we translate it to present value?
Well, the... If we look at the BUT-4 scenario for Krimmel, the costs would have been incurred much longer in the future. So the BUT-4 decommissioning costs for Krimmel would have been incurred, I believe, from 2034 to 2093. And the total amount of that is, I think, 4.8 if you include also waste and other issues. In the act, just to give you a comparison, for the actual decommissioning costs, they were incurred, well, they would start being incurred in 2012, would continue to be incurred until 2018. And that, according to Navigant Appendix G in their second report, would give an amount of four billion. So the, and that sort of confirms your point, Mr. President, that the nominal values are higher in the BUT-4 than in the actual. However, if you take into account that in the BUT-4, the cost will be incurred later in the future, if you then deduce that to the present value, that will mean that in the BUT-4 scenario, the present value as of the valuation date is 0.45 billion for Krimmel. And we're talking about Krimmel now only for the time being. And in the actual, it's 1.64 billion.
Okay.
So this is a reflection of taking the money back to the present value.
I already suspected something like that. Could you give me the references? Is this Appendix G or to the Kaczmarek first report?
Yes, so let me give you the references for Krimmel. So they're all in the second report.
Second report, okay.
The BUT-4, you will find in Appendix D1, D as in David. And the actual in Appendix G. For Brokdorf, so the, obviously, the scenario is a little bit different, but if we're talking about the difference in general between actual and BUT-4, it's basically the same mechanism. You will find that also in the second Mr. Kaczmarek report, Appendix E1, E as in Eric. And the actual is Appendix H1, second report as well.
Thank you.
And obviously, for Wünsper, there's no change between the two scenarios. I think that concludes my talk on decommissioning. We will then move on to speak about the other issues relating to quantum.
May I proceed, Mr. Chairman, or should we wait or take a break?
You can go. How many more minutes do you estimate that your presentation will?
Well, I would think this part will take anything between thirty to forty minutes.
And what is next on the menu?
This is the last point on our agenda.
Okay, right, so then let's conclude and then we have lunch and then go with close statement for the rest of the...
So I will make this presentation by going through and talking you through a couple of slides. And if we could get the first slide, which deals with reduction of our claims. As you will recall, we have discussed this from time to time during the hearing. And we have, based on calculations that Mr. Kaczmarek has performed, decided to reduce our claim. And you see the amount of reduction, fifty million, approximately 0.3%. We will show you another slide shortly where we explain how that works out. So if we could get that slide. In that, that reflects the reduced claims with respect to our primary claim for the Krimmel plant. It's a reduction by 14,605,332. On the alternative claims, it's 7,302,666 for the respective Wattenfall entity. And the Brokdorf claim is reduced by 931,404 euros. So those are the new calculations. So the ones we looked at, the opening, should thus be replaced by these prayers for relief.
The reference to the slide in the opening?
Yeah, I, we will get to it. I can't remember right now.
I'm trying to keep my bookkeeping in order.
I should also point out that there has been a discussion, as you will recall, about the role of the settlement agreement, so-called settlement agreement in this respect. And we say that our reduction of claims has nothing to do with that. The reduction of claims is based on new calculations that Mr. Kaczmarek has made, having learned new factual information looking into the payments to the Development Fund. So to say, as Joan has suggested, that certain parts of this dispute have come out is simply not correct. But those are our final prayers for relief as of... Yeah. If I move on then to talk a little bit about valuation in general. As we have discussed throughout these two weeks, we have performed, or Mr. Kaczmarek rather, has performed an ex-ante fair market valuation of our investments, which is, we say, the method to use. And it's actually laid down in Article thirteen-one of the ECT. You look at the value of the expropriated entity or property the day before the expropriation or the day before when the appropriation became known. So this is, I say, standard procedure with respect to expropriation claims and similar claims in international arbitration. As we'll point out on that slide, and as you know, this method is, the ex-ante fair market value is also used as an approach in non-expatriatory cases. Not necessarily to the exclusion of any other method, but it is the generally accepted method. And in his report, Mr. Kaczmarek explains how this makes sense from his economic standpoint, that this is the way to do it. And as we've said several times in this arbitration, the only ex-market, fair market valuation, ex-ante fair market valuation you have is the one from Mr. Kaczmarek. So if you agree with us, this is the valuation you would need to look at. If we come then to the valuation date, and this is one of your questions, I believe, question number fifteen. Well, the valuation date, as I said, that we have used is the fourteenth of March, 2011. And that is the day immediately before the news of the moratorium was leaked, the day before the moratorium was imposed. From a legal perspective, as you see, can see from the sources that we have on our slide, it is generally accepted that the valuation date must be brought forward when the actions that completes the breach has been preceded by related actions by the state, which have negatively affected the value of the investment. So even though the actual expropriation, as we have it, is on the sixth of August, you could argue that perhaps the fifth of August should have been the logical valuation date. But as we have explained, and as Mr. Kaczmarek has explained, the fourteenth of March is a relevant date here because already as of that date, market changes, market movements were underway. And in order to get a clean, so to speak, ex-ante fair market valuation, you need to take the fourteenth of March. So that is the explanation why we're using the fourteenth of March as an valuation date. In fact, Mr. Kaczmarek has made the calculation, an alternative calculation, so to speak, based on the fifth of August as the valuation date, which would in fact result in increased damages by approximately 540 million euros. Moving on then to the next slide and to another question that the tribunal posed as question number sixteen, where it asked us to explain if any, or explain which events are included in the parties' action in BUT-4 scenarios. And as you can see on the slide, the Fukushima accident is included in the BUT-4 scenario and in the actual scenario. The moratorium, and we put the fifteenth of March there because it's actually the efficient date of the moratorium, is not included in the BUT-4 but included in the actual scenario. And the Thirteenth Amendment is not included in the BUT-4 but is included in the actual scenario. Since we're looking at certain relevant dates here, I would like to comment also on an argument that Germany and Ms. Horden have tried to make.
Before you go to the next point, could you, on slide ninety-four, where it is stated that eleventh March, plus eleven in the box, the Fukushima accident is included in the BUT-4 scenario and the actual scenario? So maybe you can point it out also, not now, but in the post-hearing brief, where we exactly can find how Mr. Kaczmarek has accounted for the measures that are taken in light of the Fukushima accident. As usual, you get after such an accident, there are further measures to be taken in nuclear power plants, and where he has done that and how we can identify...
In which scenario are you talking about, BUT-4 or?
BUT-4.
Well, in the BUT-4 scenario, I think the position is that the extra measures, so to speak, that were necessary had already been done by Krimmel, by the Krimmel plant. And this we find in expert reports from Mr. Volke and Blasinger, Dr. Kleen and Mr. Neumann. So the Fukushima-generated extra measures that nuclear power plants were asked to do had, so to speak, already been done at the Krimmel plant. So there was no need to do anything in addition. If that answers your question, thank you. Well, as I was going to say, there has been some comments from the respondent's side that Mr. Kaczmarek has applied the futures curve as of tenth of March, 2011, rather than the eleventh of March. And it seems to us that Germany has misunderstood this to mean that Mr. Kaczmarek has excluded Fukushima from his assessment, which is not the case. Mr. Kaczmarek also benchmarked his valuation as per eleventh March against publicly traded value, the publicly traded value of a US company called Exelon as of fourteenth of March, i.e., after Fukushima. He first looked to German and French utilities but found them not to be really comparable. So he looked at the US company, Exelon. He did calculate the implied value per megawatt of installed capacity at Exelon with necessary adjustments for the remaining lifetime of the plant. And he found that his valuation was in line with, and in fact, lower than, the value implied by Exelon. And the data submitted with Mr. Kaczmarek's first report shows that the value of Exelon fell by 1.3% only between March ten and March fourteen. This is NAV one-nine-zero. The value of Exelon was higher on March fourteen than it was on March eight. This is also the same document. This also shows that Ms. Horden's suggestion that the Fukushima accident destroyed the value of nuclear power plants is not correct. The market in the US did not think that. Did not think that Fukushima had any significant impact on the value of nuclear power plants. This, you can find references to the Exelon benchmarking in Navigant one, Para two-four-two to two-four-three, and footnote three-two-two. If we go then to the next slide, which is headed causation, and we have already, to a certain extent, covered this in our discussion earlier today. As we say on this slide, the destructive effects of the measures were obvious already in 2011. In other words, on an ex-ante basis. The production licenses were immediately and permanently revoked. The NPVs, the new volumes, were permanently revoked. The OPV market was immediately and permanently destroyed, we say. And specifically, the OPVs were rendered worthless immediately in 2011. And as we discussed earlier, our view is that the government could and should have made, well, understood that the OPVs would be destroyed and were destroyed and should have taken certain measures, including investigations to try to remedy that situation. But the conclusion is that the OPVs were rendered worthless already in 2011. And thus not by subsequent market changes. I think that is the bottom-line conclusion with respect to that. As we have observed during these two weeks, the parties and the experts have taken quite, and perhaps even dramatically different approaches to valuation. And this is explained primarily, we think, by experts having received different instructions. Germany's experts were instructed to use an ex-ante approach, sorry, an ex-post approach rather than ex-ante approach. Ms. Harden has consequently not performed any ex-ante damages. Dr. Cohen acknowledges that Mr. Casimir's 2001 ex-enterprise projection is in line with 2011 market expectations. This is in his report and also confirmed by him during cross-examination. Ms. Harden's assessment, if we go to the next slide then, is based on a number of instructions of a legal nature and with respect to framework issues. The legal instructions we see on this slide, they are not merely instructions on limited valuation matters. Rather, Miss... Well, Germany has instructed Ms. Harden to disregard basically claimants' positive case. They've essentially asked Ms. Harden to evaluate what claimant's damages are if you disregard most of the treaty breaches on which claimants rely. She's been asked to, as we say, assume away all the breaches. And this slide that you see summarizes the standalone effect of the overarching instructions on legal and framework matters that Ms. Harden has accepted. As you can see, depending on the instructions or resulting from the instructions, the effects are quite significant. And without them, Ms. Harden could not have reached the conclusion that claimants have not suffered any damages. The legal and framework issues that we just looked at, where Ms. Harden has taken instructions from Germany, make up the lion's share of the quantum issues. If we turn to the actual valuation issues, where there are professional disagreements between the experts, there are only a few such issues that have a significant impact on their overall conclusions. And you see those valuation issues on that slide. And as you can see, there are essentially two major valuation issues that Germany and Ms. Harden rely on in their attempt to bring down the damages. And that's the delayed restart of the Krimel plant and the future value of the OPVs. With respect to the other items there on that slide, Mr. Rangwell has explained claimant's use on decommissioning costs. When it comes to CapEx and OpEx, claimants have relied on contemporaneous budgets prepared by claimants in the ordinary course of business. Germany's main objection in this respect is that the CapEx cost projections should be increased by approximately 400 million euros or additional systems for earthquake protection. Germany argues that this would be required. As Krimel suffers, they say, from a design deficiency, it does not comply with the current regulations in this respect. There is no support for such allegations in the evidence. The testimony of Dr. Klee, this is day one, pages four to eight through four to nine, lines eleven to four, page four three two, lines thirteen to seventeen, page four three three, lines twenty to sixty, six to twenty, sorry, Mr. Neumann, also transcript day one, pages five three one through five three four, lines nine to four. Dr. Bläsich and Mr. Volke, day one, page five nine four, lines one through eighteen, pages six eight one through six eight two, lines eleven to three. The testimony of these gentlemen and the written evidence in the record demonstrate that these costs are not necessary. The allegation of Dr. Grauff is not supported by evidence and, we say, should be disregarded. The same applies to Dr. Götzinger's attempt to save Dr. Grauff in his redirect testimony. So the first of these main valuation issues is the Krimel restart. And it relates to Germany's argument that the Krimel plant could not have been restarted before July 2013. Ms. Harden argues that this single issue decreases claimant's losses by 2.23 billion euro, or almost fifty percent. Mr. Casimir has assumed a reasonable restart date of January 2012. This is in line with claimant's contemporaneous planning documents that were prepared in the ordinary course of business. Since the incident in 2009, the Krimel plant had invested hundreds of millions of euros and the plant was technically ready to restart in the spring of 2011. The only outstanding matter was resolved in October 2011, when a new plant manager was appointed. And Germany's regulatory authorities have confirmed that this was the case. We can see this from the letters from the supervisory authorities submitted as exhibits, C zero one nine nine and C zero two one one. Dr. Bläsich's testimony and his presentation on slides twelve and thirteen confirm that Krimel would have been able to restart in January 2012. This was also confirmed by Dr. Götzinger during his testimony. Contrary to what Germany would have you think, pending reliability proceedings would not have prevented the restart by first of January 2012. Germany has gone to great lengths to portray claimants as unreliable operators and their plans as notorious for their problems. This is substantiated. In any event, it is unclear to this day how that legally fits into the case. And Germany cannot point to any incidents in recent history, as became clear during Dr. Kloster's testimony. In claimant's reply and Professor Arndt's expert report on reliability, it was explained that the pending reliability proceedings did not prevent a restart. Even if they did, a restart by first of January 2012 would still be reasonable. The reliability proceedings would have concluded earlier in the actual scenario. This has been confirmed by Dr. Bläsich in his report and his testimony, and as well as by Dr. Götzinger during his testimony. It also follows from contemporaneous documents showing that the implementation of measures was suspended and reorganized after the Thirteenth Amendment. So in sum, as a matter of fact, there is no evidence that the Krimel plant could not have restarted by the planned date. The evidence rather concerns when it would have been, when it would have restarted, and it has been confirmed that that would have been by first of January 2012. So that's about the restart date as such. If we then move on to discuss the delayed restart date suggested by the respondent, which is the next slide. Even if Germany were correct, and an eighteen-month delay in restart were a reasonable assumption, then the effect is not nearly as significant as Ms. Harden claims in her expert reports. Or report. If you recall, she did not calculate any such effect in her first report, as we explored during cross-examination on Wednesday. But in her second report, she not only modeled an eighteen-month delay in restart, she also introduced a new theory, we say. The theory is that even though she's making adjustments to Mr. Casimir's ex-ante valuation, the valuation should apply, in her view, ex-post electricity prices from July 2013 instead of projected prices as of the date of breach. And this even though we are dealing with, as I said, an ex-ante valuation. In other words, Ms. Harden is trying to use ex-post data in an ex-ante valuation, which is not the way to do it. There is no basis in law or damages theory to use lower ex-post electricity prices in an ex-ante valuation. As Mr. Casimir has done, the valuation must be based on electricity prices, price expectations, I should say, at the date of the breach. Thus, the largest valuation issue here is not really a proper valuation issue, but rather a theory whereby Ms. Harden disregards fundamental principles of the ex-ante damages calculation that she is purporting to address and make adjustments to. The calculation, a proper ex-ante calculation must be made on the basis of a hypothetical sale taking place at the valuation date with an able and willing buyer as of that date. If you use, if you do a... If you accept the eighteen-month restart delay, but you do a proper ex-ante valuation and use the ex-ante electricity expected prices, the effect of the delay is not 2.2 billion euro, but rather 250 million euro. So let me then move to the other, to the second of the two main valuation issues, the future value of the OPVs. This is again a topic that we have discussed today and earlier during the week. It is undisputed, we say, that the OPVs could not be sold in 2011. I think this is undisputed as between the experts, and still cannot be sold. In this respect, in evaluation of the OPVs, Mr. Casimir has adopted a consistent and reasonable view in trying to put a value to them. And his basic arguments are that there is no current market, therefore no demand, no fair market value. Therefore, the value is zero. He has also accepted that there might be a market in the future for these volumes. But in his view, timing, sales volumes, and prices are too speculative to determine a value at this point. And as we've said earlier today, to avoid any risk of double compensation, claimants are prepared to issue an irrevocable offer for Germany to sign a trustee to sell the stranded OPVs and turn over any proceeds to Germany, assuming that you were to find in this proceeding that there is no value to these OPVs. With respect to the value of the OPVs, Ms. Harden is changing her assumptions on a rather regular basis when Mr. Casimir points out fundamental flaws in her speculative market scenarios. And I believe you, Mr. Chamber, refer to that as game theory. So as I said, if we go to the next slide, Ms. Harden is creating new theories for future market scenarios in seeking to assign a value to the old volumes. We had one scenario in her first report. And when Mr. Casimir pointed out problems with that scenario, we got another scenario in her second report. And in direct examination, discussing demonstrative exhibit number three, we received a new revised scenario, or as you call it, an illustration, which meant that E.ON buys from RWE, leaving Wattenfall with a monopoly situation. The key problem there being that buyers will strive to minimize prices. It's not reasonable to assume that E.ON would not invite Krimel and Brunspittel but buy all of RWE's volumes themselves, thereby creating monopolistic selling powers for the former. Then, on the next slide, we continue to discuss this issue. Ms. Harden introduces contradictory arguments to defend her theories. For instance, in relation to the third theoretical scenario that we just saw the other day on the rec, she argues on the basis that Wattenfall could be able to create a monopolistic pricing power towards E.ON, then emphasizes that decisions to sell the Krimel and Brunspittel OPVs would need to be made jointly by Wattenfall and E.ON. We also discussed during cross-examination the fact that Ms. Harden relies on outdated RPVs, reference production volumes, to overstate the potential future demand of OPVs rather than relying on actual utilization rates. Going then to the next slide. As I mentioned, Ms. Harden reaches zero impact of the measures on claimant's investments by assuming away all measures but the fixed shutdown dates and assigning billions, billion euro value to the unsellable OPVs. And she seeks to justify her conclusion in the following way. And she seeks to justify her conclusion in the following way. There hadn't been a market for nuclear power plants in Germany for 10 years, over 10 years prior to Fukushima. Why is that? Because the nuclear power plants were in decline. They were a dying industry in Germany. They had already decided early in the 2000s that nuclear power was being phased out. But that ignores the lifetime extension that had been granted just months before Fukushima. And even if nuclear power in Germany had been in decline, it would not explain the alleged positive difference between the but-for and the actual scenarios. We also discussed during cross-examination with her, the so-called ENBW transaction, which Ms. Harden referred to as a failed transaction in support of her theory that there was no market, so to speak, for buying and selling nuclear power plants. And she referred to that as one of two failed transactions involving German NPPs, relying on the fact that the buyer had initiated arbitration. Faced with the fact that the award has actually, had actually been rendered upholding the transaction, Ms. Harden's comment was, it is not actually a nuclear power plant and that was not necessarily the objective on that sale. Well, if we turn to the next slide. Well, I should say also, over 31 percent of ENBW's capacity was nuclear power plants. And this comes from Navigant Appendix T. Moreover, despite Ms. Harden's testimony that the measures have benefited claimants by hundreds of millions of euros, ENBW felt very differently, as they explained in an investor presentation that Ms. Harden has submitted with her second report, this is LH 122. In this presentation, ENBW discussed the financial results for the first half of 2011. ENBW noted that the effects from the moratorium and modification of the Atomic Energy Act had caused a 24 percent or 280 euro million reduction in earnings in just a few months. It is also necessary, if we go to the next slide, to comment on Ms. Harden's approach as an expert. In short, it does not inspire confidence. She makes arguments on law, economics and facts, yet when proven wrong hides behind the issue being legal or and/or outside her expertise. And I have some examples there concerning the fair market value relating to being of or that there has to be a formal taking before you can have a fair market value valuation. When it comes to the CTAs, she argued that for economic reasons, it's inappropriate to assign damages to the O-HAGs since they will not benefit from the cash flow due to the CTAs, due to the CTAs. But confronted with the fact that the CTAs apply to electricity produced and not to revenue from selling volumes, this, her conclusion is then based on a legal assumption. Also, if we go to the next slide. In her reports, she argues and speculates on electricity price issues and also on redirect, but during cross-examination defers to Dr. Cohen when it comes to price issues. Also, she has, when dealing with discount rates, she dropped the discount rate issue which was based on misreading of the footnote, which also goes, I think, to credibility of her as an expert. Also, a few comments with respect to Dr. Cohen and his role as an expert. The prices, the conclusions in his report are the result of instructions, we say, to apply an X post approach, which he was instructed to do. He had the capability and capacity to do X enterprise projections, but was instructed not to do that. He, on the other hand, acknowledges that Mr. Kaczmarek's X-ante projection was in line with 2011 X-ante market expectations. And if we look at the next slide, you will see a graph that you've seen before. And in making this confirmation of Mr. Kaczmarek's projections, Dr. Cohen referred to this particular graph. And I might add that, I think we discussed when we looked at that graph, that some of the lines start only 2015, since those projections are based on futures market prices, starting 2015, futures prices for the first three years. That's why the graph looks like it does. Dr. Cohen, going to the next line, referred to the futures curve when it supported the projection in his first report, but was not so keen to look at futures market prices when they did not support his projection in the second report. He did acknowledge, though, that futures market prices are relevant at least for the first three years. And we, as you may recall, looked at two graphs together with Dr. Cohen comparing futures prices and his projections. And his projections in this comparison exceeds future prices by 21 to 55 percent already in the first 36 months, and that is illustrated by the graph on that slide. Let's go to the next slide then, which deals with Germany's offset argument, which was raised sort of in passing in Germany's rejoinder. And in an attempt to suggest that it's not new, Germany makes some references to the countermemorial. None of the paragraphs referred to actually include this offset argument. In relation to damages incurred by the claims, Germany speculates that, and I quote, "Wattenfall was presumably simultaneously compensated by a positive financial impact on its non-nuclear Germany argues that without any, Germany argues without any supporting evidence or alternative calculations, that the success of some of claimants' other separate business entities should somehow be used to offset claimants' losses claimed in this arbitration. This set of claim by Germany is what we call an affirmative defense to claimants' claims and the burden of proof accordingly lies with Germany, since it is raising this defense. This principle, although really of a general nature, has been confirmed quite recently by the tribunal in the Hrvatska, Slovenia award. Moreover, a set of claim to be successfully made must be tied to the same business activity. It cannot arise out of a different business of the same company. The set of was found in the Philip Morris case where the tribunal found that the trademark portfolio was closely intertwined with the domestic company's operations. In essence, Euroguy prevented the sale of a few of the claimant brand variants, but within the same cigarette market. In the present case, respondent is alleging the enourment of a benefit from the non-nuclear portfolio, which is completely independent from claimants' nuclear portfolio. Germany has simply not met the burden of proof in this respect. To begin with, Germany has ignored that the only claimant company that has a non-nuclear portfolio is Wattenfall GmbH and indirectly Wattenfall AB. All other claimants have no other business, I mean, have no non-nuclear business. Germany's offset argument could thus in no circumstances affect the other claimants. Germany furthermore has not provided any evidence to substantiate that claimants have experienced any positive offset, nor has Germany, Germany's experts sought to make any estimate or calculation that could lend any credence to Germany's defense in this regard. Germany's case is thus limited to restating the unspecified blanket assertion that there presumably was a positive financial impact on claimants' non-nuclear portfolio. In addition, Germany has never really argued and explained how claimants' non-nuclear portfolio would affect claimants' nuclear portfolio. This raises the question as to how this hypothetical set of would even be calculated. This is further shown by the fact that Germany has ignored that three of the claimants' entities could never have been affected by Germany's offset defense. So we say this is an argument without any merit. Well, Mr. Chamberlain, this concludes our presentation of the quantum section and it concludes, as a matter of fact, our opening. But let me say this before-
I think it's your closing.
Sorry?
I think it is your closing statement. You said opening.
Okay, it is the closing statement.
I know you want to restart again.
Yeah. That's for sure. But in closing, then my closing argument, I come back to what I call the bottom line legal issue in this case. I will not repeat it because I did it this morning. But we have never challenged or doubted the right of the Federal Republic of Germany to regulate its business and to take policy decisions. That's beyond dispute. But when a policy shift or a policy decision results in the destruction, complete destruction of investment, that has to have consequences. And the German state has to be, or take its responsibility for that. And I cannot refrain from referring and indeed quoting Peter the Great, who once said that Russia is the country where things don't happen, happen. The moratorium and the 13th amendment did not happen in Russia. It happened in Germany. It should not have happened in Germany. But now, since it did happen in Germany, the German government, the Federal Republic of Germany, has to pay compensation to damages inflicted on the claimants. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking at the clock. Dr. Conrad, is three quarters of an hour for lunch sufficient for your side?
If you saw me whisper with my colleagues, that was exactly the proposal I was making because I was afraid I wouldn't be able to catch my flight otherwise.
Yeah, because we have to finish, Judge Baur needs to leave at seven.
At seven? I think we said 7:30 the other day?
Yeah, this is also-
I can't guarantee for seven.
Okay. Assume that's 7:30. All right, three quarters of an hour is okay for your side as well? Okay, thank you. Recession until two o'clock.